Good evening, my name is Chad Johnson and the vice president of the 40 ISD Board of Trustees. I hear back call of the 40 ISD Board of Trustees meeting at six o'clock P M. Certified that the board is present and the meeting has been posted to the time when they are required by law. The one who may be show over to the public, all of us meeting is public. Comments or questions on the lines will be defined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Again, thank you for attending this meeting. It is now, still six o'clock. We will take item thirteen out of order and the board will be in a closed session with Texas government code sections five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, five five one point zero seven six, and five five one point zero eight nine. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in double decision. We are now closed.
Good evening. I'm Greg Ferris, President and Captain of the board. We want to begin this meeting in regular session. This time, I'm going to ask you to rise for information.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Stewart, Ambassador at the Denver Church. We actually meet inside of Griffin Elementary every Sunday morning, and so you can imagine this is a great honor because we hold the school, the principals, the school board, all here and here to our heart. So if you would, pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We come before you tonight recognizing you as our Creator and as our Savior. God, our hope and our mercy and our grace comes absolutely a hundred percent from you, God. We recognize who we are, creations of you, God. We're designed and created for a purpose by you, God. You give us our identity, our purpose, our meaning, and for that, we're grateful, God. We just ask tonight that you would give wisdom to our leaders, our principals, our school board, that you would give energy and mercy to our educators, God, and that you would give patience and well-being to our students. We ask for protection over our campuses, and we just thank you, we humbly thank you for dying for us on the cross. It's in your mighty hand, we pray. Amen.
Our next item is the one for our students of the month. They are the students of the year. We'll introduce the students of the month.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Ferris, Mr. Ferris, and members of the board for allowing me to be here to introduce our two students of the month from the OC. Our first student of the month, Katie Sappadomnaga. As a senior at the Virtual Academy, Katie has made remarkable strides this year. Not only has she served as an OC Student Ambassador, but she has also recently earned her Cosmetology Associate License, which is not very easy, Katie, which that has showcased her dedication and hard work. Katie's journey has been nothing short of inspiring. When she first stepped into her role as an ambassador, she was shy and quiet. However, over the past year, she has blossomed into a competent speaker, demonstrating significant growth in her public speaking abilities. Her transformation has not been unnoticed. She is now one of our most requested ambassadors and prepares the culture for leadership and determination. As she prepares to graduate, we eagerly anticipate the incredible accomplishments that lie ahead for Katie. With her passion and drive, there's no doubt she will continue to shine in whatever path she chooses. Please join us in celebrating Katie Sappadomnaga, a shining example of perseverance and growth at our Virtual Academy. And our second OC Student of the Month is Maria Bielka, affectionately known as Liz. As a sophomore at Corning High School, Liz has already made a significant impact as one of our OC Student Ambassador apprentices. Since joining the program in January, she has quickly adapted to her role, demonstrating an impressive ability to navigate our building and present confidently to our visitors. Liz has not only dedicated her role as an ambassador, but also excels academically as a health science student, balancing both dual credit and A P classes. Her commitment to her studies and her responsibilities as an ambassador has set a remarkable example for her peers, making her a fantastic role model for the other ambassador candidates. With her skills and determination, we are confident that Liz will become one of our best school-fledged ambassadors this year. Please join us in celebrating Liz, a rising star at the OC.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Katie and I will be singing the Lord's Prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May God with Texas pledge.
First, we have my Griffin PTO donation.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one
Pastor Paul is present and Kristen, that's Paul to the question.
and indivisible.
I'm here, yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Ferris. At this time, if I could ask the Griffin PTO, I believe they were joining us this evening with our principal, Ms. Kratsky. The Griffin PTO has been an incredible partner for Griffin Elementary and worked countless hours to support staff and student initiatives. With your approval, they would like to donate eight thousand dollars from the recent boost of funds donated to Griffin Elementary.
Board, can you hear the recognition? Add a motion to the board?
Mr. Ferris, I would like to get the acceptance donation.
Mr. Carter, go a second. Mr. Johnson, all the papers say aye. Do you oppose? I hear none. Thank you.
All right. Our second donation of the evening for consideration, if I could have Mr. Cody Newman join us along with our elementary teachers that are with us this evening. This past fall, Corning High Band Director, Mr. Cody Newman, was honored as the Country Music Association Music Teacher of Excellence. This recognition came with a five thousand dollar award for Corning High School Band Program and initial five thousand dollars to Mr. Newman. Mr. Newman has selflessly decided to donate his five thousand dollars to support elementary music programs preparing future Corning High musicians. With your approval, the funds will be donated from the Corning High Band professors to Clayton, Willett, Henderson, and Johnson Elementary School music programs.
Thank you, Board. Can you hear this recognition? Add a motion?
Mr. Ferris, aye.
Add a motion, Chris Payton, go a second.
Second.
Miss Dobbs, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
And there's none of us, so congratulations. First, I want to carry on.
As the journey of high school comes to a close, we proudly recognize the top ten graduates from North Corning and Corning High School. Their heart, their passionate commitment has set them apart, shaking off the lid of futures but inspiring all who follow their good steps. Students, please join us up front after you say your name on the video. First to join us is the twenty twenty five North Corning Top Ten Students.
Please join me as we congratulate the top ten students from North Corning High School twenty twenty five.
Number ten, Divdarsh Singh. Divdarsh is the son of Manpreet Kar and Lokvinder Singh. Divdarsh plans to study business at the University of Texas at Dallas and work as a mechanic upon graduation. Number ten, Divdarsh Singh. Number nine, Sophia Simmons. Sophia is the daughter of Scott and Christie Simmons. Sophia plans to study biomedical science with a Presidential Elite Scholarship at the University of Alabama at Birmingham. Number nine, Sophia Simmons. Number eight, Plamen Zjakov Todorov. Plamen is the son of Tatiana and Zjakov Todorov. Plamen plans to study computer engineering at the University of Texas at Dallas. Number eight, Plamen Todorov. Number seven, Caleb Holt. Caleb is the son of Crystal Anderson and Brandon Holt. Caleb plans to play Division One football at the Air Force Academy on a Full Ride Scholarship. After college, Caleb plans to join the Air Force as a second lieutenant. Number seven, Caleb Holt. Number six, Briasia Roberts. Briasia is the daughter of Belinda Allen and Cory Roberts. Briasia plans to study biology with a cellular, molecular, and biomed emphasis as a track-and-field student athlete at Boise State University. Number six, Briasia Roberts. Number five, Evan Yamane. Evan is the son of Binion Sebatu and Salamawit Meharri. Evan plans to study computer engineering at the University of Texas at Dallas. Number five, Evan Yamane. Number four, Simona Michael. Simona is the daughter of Wehazi Resum and Michael Kidone. Simona plans to study public health at the University of Texas at Austin. Number four, Simona Michael. Number three, Jimmy Pineda. Jimmy is the son of Cindy Vasquez and Eric Barrera. Jimmy plans to study finance at the University of Texas at Dallas. Number three, Jimmy Pineda. North Corning High School Soliditorian, Paul Singh. Paul is the son of Ravi and Sanu Singh. Paul plans to study computer science with a specialization in A I and machine learning at Southern Methodist University. Your soliditorian, Paul Singh. North Corning High School Valedictorian, Josiah Coffey. Josiah is the son of David and Emily Coffey. Josiah plans to study computer science at the University of Texas at Austin. Your valedictorian, Josiah Coffey. Congratulations to all our Corning ISD graduates for two thousand and twenty five.
Please join me as we celebrate the Corning High School Top Ten Students for the graduating class of two thousand and twenty five.
Number ten, Sarah Colthard. Sarah is the daughter of Darla and Jack Colthard. Sarah plans to study sports management at Texas A and M University. Number ten, Sarah. Number nine, Kylie Johnson. Kylie is the daughter of Jeff and Jennifer Johnson. Kylie plans to play collegiate soccer and pursue a degree in the medical field at the University of Arizona. Number nine, Kylie Johnson. Number eight, Riley New. Riley is the daughter of Tracy and Raymond New. Riley plans to study human development and family sciences at the University of Texas. Number eight, Riley New. Number seven, McKenna Duncan. McKenna is the daughter of Karen and Terry Duncan. McKenna plans to study biological sciences on the pre-medical track at Baylor University. Number seven, Katie Duncan. Number six, Embry Irie. Embry is the daughter of Joseph and Benay Irie. Embry plans to study elementary education and pursue a career in preschool ministry at Dallas Baptist University. Number six, Embry Irie. Number five, Landry Helm. Landry is the daughter of Greg and Amber Helm. Landry plans to study bio-environmental science at Texas A and M University. Number five, Landry Helm. Number four, Izzy Johansson. Izzy is the daughter of Matt and Mary Johansson. Izzy plans to study family and consumer sciences education at Brigham Young University. Number four, Izzy Johansson. Number eight, Jane Salgado. Jane is the daughter of Sarah and Richard Salgado. After graduation, Jane plans to study journalism at Brigham Young University. Number three, Jane Salgado. Catherine Spiller. Catherine is the daughter of Andy and Maggie Spiller. Catherine plans to study environmental science with minors in journalism and peace studies at the University of Notre Dame. North Corning High School Valedictorian, Brandon G. Brandon is the son of Missy and Pete G. Brandon plans to study data science at the University of Texas at Austin. Your valedictorian, Brandon G.
Congratulations to all our Corning ISD graduates for two thousand and twenty five.
And now the twenty twenty five Top Ten Students for Corning High School.
Please join me as we celebrate the Corning High School Top Ten Students for the graduating class of two thousand and twenty five.
Number ten, Sarah Colthard. Sarah is the daughter of Darla and Jack Colthard. Sarah plans to study sports management at Texas A and M University. Number ten, Sarah. Number nine, Kylie Johnson. Kylie is the daughter of Jeff and Jennifer Johnson. Kylie plans to play collegiate soccer and pursue a degree in the medical field at the University of Arizona. Number nine, Kylie Johnson. Number eight, Riley New. Riley is the daughter of Tracy and Raymond New. Riley plans to study human development and family sciences at the University of Texas. Number eight, Riley New. Number seven, McKenna Duncan. McKenna is the daughter of Karen and Terry Duncan. McKenna plans to study biological sciences on the pre-medical track at Baylor University. Number seven, Katie Duncan. Number six, Embry Irie. Embry is the daughter of Joseph and Benay Irie. Embry plans to study elementary education and pursue a career in preschool ministry at Dallas Baptist University. Number six, Embry Irie. Number five, Landry Helm. Landry is the daughter of Greg and Amber Helm. Landry plans to study bio-environmental science at Texas A and M University. Number five, Landry Helm. Number four, Izzy Johansson. Izzy is the daughter of Matt and Mary Johansson. Izzy plans to study family and consumer sciences education at Brigham Young University. Number four, Izzy Johansson. Number eight, Jane Salgado. Jane is the daughter of Sarah and Richard Salgado. After graduation, Jane plans to study journalism at Brigham Young University. Number three, Jane Salgado. Catherine Spiller. Catherine is the daughter of Andy and Maggie Spiller. Catherine plans to study environmental science with minors in journalism and peace studies at the University of Notre Dame. North Corning High School Valedictorian, Brandon G. Brandon is the son of Missy and Pete G. Brandon plans to study data science at the University of Texas at Austin. Your valedictorian, Brandon G.
Congratulations to all our Corning ISD graduates for two thousand and twenty five.
Our next item, I'd like to call Sarah Smith back to the microphone. We'll be introducing our association recognitions.
We'd like to start and welcome up Dr. Kimberly Landers from Dallas College to help us recognize our associate degree students. So tonight, we proudly recognize the exceptional achievements of these students who have earned their associate degree for Dallas College while concurrently completing their high school education. These students have demonstrated extraordinary dedication, academic excellence, and perseverance by successfully navigating both high school and college level course work. We commend their commitment to advancing their education and applaud the support of their families, the tough guys that bond these students. These accomplishments not only reflect personal determination, but highlight the success of our dual enrollment early college admissions. This is the first time we have fifty six graduates that will graduate to their associate degree. In the overall list, we have approximately over a hundred and fifty additional students that will be considered four complete prior to graduation. They serve as an inspiring example of what can we achieve through hard work and opportunity. Congratulations to all of these students on the tremendous achievement. So we'll start with our North Corning High School students that have earned their associate degrees in associate of arts or associate of finance.
Good job, Amelia.
Good job, Amanda.
Good job, Amanda.
All right. There it is.
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 And now we welcome to the stage our Corning High School students who earned their associate degree.
Ready to go, Karen.
Ready to go, Cash.
All right, there it is.
Congratulations to all of our certificate earners. You have played a strong foundation for your future success and we are proud to celebrate you. Our first recognition is for our H-Back certificate. We had two students from North Forty High that have earned their rising, we'll learn, you'll admit, their rising H-Backer commission or Level Two certificate in your position. Our next students that we are going to recognize have completed all of the coursework for their vocational nursing patient care technician and they are ready to go into the workforce right after graduation. So we'd like to recognize our students from both North Forty and Forty High School. It may take them a second since some of them also earned their Associate Degree at the same time as they did. The next certifications we are going to honor tonight is to celebrate a significant and historic achievement in our tradition. For the first time in Forty High's history, a group of our high school students has successfully earned their cosmetology operator certification through a rigorous program in partnership with Trinity Valley Community College. To reach this milestone, each student completed a thousand hours of training and instruction, mastering essential skills in hair, skin, and nail care while also meeting the academic and professional standards required by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. This remarkable commitment was pursued in tandem with our high school coursework, demonstrating outstanding time management, perseverance, and professionalism. These graduates are now fully licensed and workforce ready to prepare to launch careers in the cosmetology industry immediately upon graduation. Congratulations. You have made Forty ISB history and we are proud to celebrate your achievement.
Moving on to our next group, I'd like to have Mr. Neil Weaver taking the ready athletes to come to the microphone. We'll stop with Earl Sparkle.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, and yes, it is always an honor and a blessing to me to be able to recognize some of the outstanding student athletes in our school district. In Forty ISB athletics, we have been teams throughout the year that strive for successes and achieve small successes throughout the year. However, when you have one that represents our school district at the state level, they are achieving success at the highest level on the main stage. We had a high watermark in an outstanding program this year. This program's been very strong for many years. The Forty High School girls soccer team and coaches, would you join us out of place? These ladies and gentlemen, they're a professional team representing the ISB in the UIL State Championships this year. This represents a successful partnership between coaches, very dedicated student athletes, and of course, their very dedicated parents. I have to say, on a personal level, it also represents that if you hang around long enough, you get to recognize some great kids that are children of great kids that you recognized many years ago. Congratulations. State semifinals, four high schools. Yet another first for this program, yet another high watermark. We had three of these young ladies who were recognized by the Soccer Coaches Association as first team and second team, all state players. If you would step up please with Coach Williams and ladies, have your picture. Congratulations Forty High School girls soccer. Thank you for coming today and back in here again. Hey, Rob and Mel to present to the school board members. They watch you at UIL, know that they're going to get to, thank you, Dr. Williams. Just, yeah. Thank you. Rob, all the hardware, enough to share. Thank you ladies. Coach Williams, great job. Thank you. Alright, our next group. We had another sport at Forty High School that represents our school district at the state level. This is the Texas High School Powerlifting Association State Championship. You guys know we've got many, many strong students in Forty ISB. You saw them in the top ten. You saw some of them, you'll see some of them in there that have been called state. But pound for pound, our powerlifters are absolutely the strongest kids in the school district. These ladies and gentlemen went to the Texas High School Powerlifting Association State Championships this year. Congratulations to the town, male and female coaches staff. We also had forty students in a number of sports that represent our school district in academics and athletics by being awarded either by the Texas High School Coaches Association, the Texas Girls Coaches Association, or both, as athletic all-state academic teams. In our first group, representing Forty High School and North Forty High School on the boys and girls' side, all-state academic in track. We did have student athletes representing the state track. We have said the board being to be determined to come in the future. We just got back from that. These folks are academic all-state and well-touted. They take into account GPA, test scores, and these student athletes have to make a significant contribution to their team at the barstool representing us in Forty ISB. Our next sport, academic all-state, team tennis. Both Forty High and North Forty represented. Team tennis, academic all-state, here we go. Next up is academic all-state softball, Forty High and North Forty. Better boy than Lady Jack brothers. They're still playing softball. They've got a playoff series this week in the west. Best of luck to them. Congratulations academic all-state softball. Next, both high schools represented, academic all-state in baseball. Thank you guys. Congratulations. Next is academic all-state basketball from Forty and North Forty High School. Congratulations basketball. We're finishing up with a sport that we started with, academic all-state from both high schools in soccer. Soccer coaches and academic all-state award winners, please come on out. As you can see, lots of success across the board with our student athletes and athletic program. We're very proud of them. Good problem.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. This time I'd like to have Mr. Warren, the director of finance.
Mr. Ferris, I'm Terry Warren. The past one, we don't fit the MTCAs in the professional state championships here at UCL. We almost had two out and attendance for this event, so we have four groups that we want to recognize. So our first group to recognize tonight is the Forty ISB middle school percussion, indoor percussion. They've got the body of the student athletes and fighters that have earned a seasonized score of ninety-two point nine five. They secured the MTCA percussion against. And then our third director, Mr. Warren. Mr. Jacobs, this is Mr. Jacobs here. And Mr. Taka, our band director and array intermediate. Congratulations to these students. This is such a neat group because two middle schools forming one group. There we go. Congratulations. Our next group to recognize tonight is the Forty High School percussion. In the early balance of the top spot for the Forty Professionals, the first ever MTCA percussion open class championship with a record-breaking score of eighty-nine points, the championship. in the state championship. That's just percussion. The band is getting close to 300 students, so I don't think we can take a photo of them. Our next group is a newer group to 40, not brand new, but they've been around for a few years. Our next group to recognize tonight is the North 40 Indoor Winds under the direction of Mr. Ryan King and Mr. Cor. So Indoor Winds is basically margin-made doors. It's hard to pick up more here in justice. These students delivered a powerful performance of their show Sanctuary earning an unprecedented first 89-point course of the highest-known score in the MTCAD history. While they're taking their photo here, I'll keep talking here. This athlete, Montumbo, also earned a place to compete at the 2025 World Championships in Ohio last month where they finished in seventh place. Incredible achievement on the national stage. And thank you to Troy, Ken, and Mr. Gist for all the work that everybody's been doing. And our last group, our last MTCAD recognition for tonight is the North 40 Indoor Percussion Team. Their score of 92.75 clinched their eighth consecutive MTCAD championship at this event. And while they're listening, they're going to stay right there for next recognition. It is with immense pride, since we see this big trophy here, I still present to you the North 40 Indoor Percussion Team, the 2025 WGI Conference Percussion Open Class World Champions. Delivered an unforgettable performance of their show Momentum earning the highest score of the season from multiple matches, 6.35, and securing first place on the world stage. A record-breaking season, after their seventh consecutive MTCAD championship. Their season is a testament to their resilient passion and unwavering dedication. Students have not only met every single challenge, they also made school history. This year marked Montumbo's third appearance at the World Championships and their first ever championship title at the North 40 High School. Congratulations to the amazing and special students. Much so thanks to Mr. Crouch, Mr. Gist, for all their hard work and tough input into that. I've been here 19 years, that's the most over spoken, so. Next, I'd like to call on my colleagues from Pierce's team of animation, Mr. Jason Ford.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Chairperson Pierce from the North. I would like to introduce Jake Walker. He is our coordinator at student engagement and he oversees all of our esports programs throughout the year, from elementary and high school.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. 40 High's esports program began seven years ago at North 40 High School, and since that time, we've worked and grown and educated our kids in world esports. For those of you that don't know, esports is short for electronic sports. Much like the track team, there's a variety of different events that these kids compete in, from Super Smash Brothers, Madden, The Valorant, Overwatch. They earn points and they qualify for state. These six students qualified for our first ever representation at a state meet. These were, well, these six, four of them are freshmen, who we have to thank ahead of us. These six are led by Coach Ben Littleman. You ready? Can we raise your hand? There we go. And next, we have Mr. Janine Lysen, our animation manager. We're getting through it. Janine Lysen, director of theater, and 10 chairs.
Good evening, we're members of Dr. Chairperson Lysen. The 40 High School Fine Arts is proud to recognize the accomplishments of our major programs this year. At first, we continue their success, is the Warren Middle School Dance Team. This year, these fabulous athletes earned A B T S National Champions, National Champions Team Show, National Champions Team Hip-Hop, National Champions Team Hong Kong, Royal Word, Team Hip-Hop, A B T S National Champions. And the direction of Dance Director Peyton Mays. He's had the interest for God to be proud of him here. Congratulations, Peyton. And next up, the Turner Middle School Dance, their dance team, the Starlets, making school history. And in the direction of Dance Director Malcolm McCarley, they earned Grand Champion Team, Grand Champion Team Division, judges for showmanship and presentation, Sweet States Award, first place in several categories, novelty, pop, jazz, honk. Elephant is in first place soloist, and H T E Dance State Champions. Congratulations, Peyton. And next, the Jackson Middle School Jule Dance Team. And in the direction of Dance Director Ryan Smith. This team earned second place in Hong Kong, third place in novelty, best in hockey or presentation, and state champion in field presentation of the past year. They were also the H T E Dance State Team Champions. Congratulations, dancers. And now, next, making school history, is our student, intermediate, advanced academic, and fine arts economy dance company. And in the direction of Christiana Hogan, Raven, this team continues to grace the R R M have fantastic accomplishments. National Champions Team winner, National Team Champion Team Hong Kong opened winner, National Champions soloist, the list goes on. Congratulations to our American Dance Grill Team National Champions, intermediate, elite, and national award winner. Congratulations, dancers.
And next, Mr. Mike, director of virtual and digital art.
Good evening, Dr. Chairperson, members of the school. Tonight, we are excited to honor us select 40 High School students who have artistic accomplishments. Two weeks ago, they had younger students compete in the T A K visual arts class event. This event showcased the top student artists of the state of Texas, and 40 High School is proud to have eight of our very own among them. Please join me in congratulating these amazing artists and teachers. They are Mary Moschino, Romano Rize, Simbolo De Guma, Oso Uisilbo, Jasmine Peñarro, Yvonne Aza, Nonna Hiller, and Alexa Austin, for your teacher's heart. All Austin's good, for your teacher's heart, and Natasha Richard Shutter, Jennifer Holland, Paige Taylor, Alyssa Hudo, and Sarah Torres. Alexa is our only senior in this group and has had an amazing career in the numerous contests. We are proud to announce that she will be attending the prestigious School of the Art Institute of Chicago within the fall.
I'm back. For this round, I am clear to recognize her skills in USA, to the members who have needed to speak. These students have qualified to compete at Skill USA Texas State Championship Skills Conference. These students have been traded in college, technical, sales, professional and other across a range of highly competitive fields, including all kinds of graphic design, cosmetic, engineering. In addition, one of our 40 High School students, Lauren Roy, created the winning design for the T-shirt given to all state participants. She qualified for the state level in skill USA, the nationally recognized career-driven student organization this semester. It reflects the dedication of her students to match the record world industry all of its skills. These students have spent countless hours of recurring collaboration on amazing craft, which have been among the best of the state. We also commend the passionate advisors who have guided them on this journey. Congratulations to all of these students for their honor to celebrate your success. And I am clear to recognize the outstanding achievements of our culinary posters teams who recently competed at the Texas Roseford Invitational, the premium high school culinary awards. Professors showed these their exceptional culinary skills, creating and working on state-of-the-art, earning the recognition among the top culinary talent in Texas. We are especially proud to celebrate the accomplishments of 40 High School team that placed third in the Roseford Championship, the lead division of the competition. In this prestigious honor, I would like to commend them the title of third-place state champions, and also scholarship offered to these various respected culinary institutions. This contest reflects students' dedication to technical excellence and profession, as well as strength of our culinary program and expert craftsmanship. Congratulations. And now, for our FFA C Hall of Famers. We are proud to recognize the continued excellence of our FFA Honed Business Engagement Team, who recently competed in a area five FFA competition along with East Texas Men and Women's University. With this strong agricultural knowledge, these students earned their place at state hall in their second consecutive year, a testament to their hard work, consistency, and dedication to excellence in agricultural education. We applaud these students for representing 40 High School with professionalism and pride, and give them gratitude to the dedicated FFA advisors and supporters who guide and encourage them. Congratulations.
Good question, Ash, over to my opponent, who is in good hands.
Yes, it is my privilege tonight to introduce our student council force. About 49 I C students have achieved remarkable success this year, earning national recognition as a golden council excellence. For their dedication and hard work, also culminated in the prestigious state sweepstakes award, highlighting their excellence across all available department areas. His athletes include the outstanding student council award, also specific recognition through records in community service, dash, and interview environment, and private behavior. Furthermore, FHS students and advisor Lily Keaton received several different honors, including scholarships and leadership positions. This impressive show and admirable commitment and impact of the 49 High School Student Council.
The 49 High School Student Council is also the district's exceptional achievement, earning esteemed state sweepstakes award. Significant accomplishment recognizes their success and innovation across the various programs offered by the Texas Association of Student Houses. The dedication of the students, guided by their advisors, who can cross, will lead this whole university to state wide recognition. This award highlights a heartbroken commitment of the 49 High School Student Council to excellence in their endeavors. We are excited to recognize the talented students who have our passing of year with their outstanding achievement in the annual classic state prize competition. Their dedication to have this school year created time and double ticket, let's honor this prestigious award. In addition, all members of the 2024 year of the staff, who have 17 and 18 awards. Senior high school, for best year, but future short in the state, and best year of your book, for all the purpose of our future, we should work to do. Let's look, recommend this course, and then we'll start with the first of the speakers.
And now to recognize some of those who may all have passed the state of our career. My last question is, can you report that? So, for the operations of my.
Good day, Mr. Ferrers and Dr. Terry Moore. I think I know what he said, she said, you had an amazing time, so for now, we're just doing recommendations. Do you know if that time was successful or not? Okay, so.
All right, here's tonight's recognition, uh, one of the most amazing persons here. Uh, we're here to celebrate our campus and district. These dedicated educators can slide here, they make, they make a profound difference in the lives of our students each year. We're so incredibly proud of their commitment and achievements. The 49 I C foundation provided $500 for our K teachers, of the year, and additional $500 for our district teachers managers. We're so thankful for them, for their general.
We're so proud of you, amazing educators. We thank you, we recommend you for our students every day, and thank you for being our partner. Our very talented media agency, the very video, I'm liking our, of all our teachers, uh, K teachers, we're here to teach our teachers. The teachers and future, uh, look please come forward, I'd like to be our interest.
We also want to congratulate our elementary and district teacher of the year, Mrs. Katie Wheeler. And our secondary district teacher of the year, Ms. Alyssa Maratry. Ms. Alyssa, we'd like to thank you for your contributions.
This evening, our partners Ashana Brown Operations Detective for Education Partnerships at Indiana West Union University, and Ryan Dinkert, who are members of our 40 ISD faculty program, joining us to celebrate our arrival. The faculty program is the foundation of a active teaching for 40 ISD students, thus highly qualified and prepared professionals. Through our journey, she committed and committed to college coursework in partnership with 40 ISD and IWDU. To ensure their success, she chose interns as supportive of acting instructional coach and and mentor teacher. Since this evening, we're proud to recognize nine faculty equipped participants for achieving the significant milestones through their recent graduations. Their unwavering dedication to image readiness, their profession and personal growth are intrinsically invaluable. Please join me in offering exceptional educators that they recognize for earning a bachelor's degree in their disciplinary studies from Indiana West Union University, closely recognized by the Department of Health and Research. We're looking at Ashley. She'll get an A to S. I'm Cheryl Lohr. And Momma Guinness. Lori Hall. Candice Rose. Melanie Schmidt. Jamie Thompson. Stephanie Villapondo. And now, we have our faculty coaches joining us with the picture of the faculty coaches Rebecca O'Shaughnessy and Danielle Crystal Corney, who know they're going to work with you to support our candidates for their graduation process.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have heard your recess. We'll take a final review of yourselves.
Yes, and I'm going to ask our representatives from our Forecast the Future of Education Committee to convene. Over the course of four evenings, more than 125 students, parents, staff members, and business leaders came together to participate in our Forecast the Future of Education Committee meetings. This diverse group engaged in collective engagement, meaningful conversations, shared valuable perspectives in our collaborative and collaborative leadership and global vision for the future of learning in 40 ISD. Their commitment to the process reflects strong community support and how their school operates. We're excited to welcome our committee representatives to the meeting, where they will share their recommendations that are important and inspiring. To ensure 40 ISD students are prepared for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Sidg, for bringing us here today. I did think you could just go to the school where I said, "How do you play that school for me?" You get your section of service reports. Katie, we'd like to thank 40 ISD, as former presidents and representatives. My name is David Silva, wife of our president, and our board members of 2020. And one more.
Our community believes students are future-ready skills and talented to thrive in every special role. Skills like communication.
We had over 125 students, parents, business leaders, and educators all working together.
By being together, we're supporting students' cultural and identity success. Self-improvement and personal development. Academic and career preparedness.
Forecast the future.
Digital leadership and citizenship.
Skills.
Self-reliance.
How we should measure students not just by exams. But by milestones and practical readiness for life and graduation.
All essential for fostering the positive and capable individuals who will shape and contribute to this success. But you may also learn in Gallup's research that there are three major indicators of student success.
As David said, our charge of information of high success.
When students still hope, experience awareness, engage in their own activities, and personal growth is better. The Forecast the Future of Education Committee is charging 40 ISD to provide many opportunities for engagement and the ultimate future-ready skill base to enable achievement. But the four actions of our experience committee's recommendation is built on six interconnected pillars that help us accomplish comprehensive framework of future success. First, by preparing learners. We ensure that students have strong, essential capabilities and future-ready skills. For facilitation and collaboration better than in very private solving and digital leadership. We build track monitors that can technically demonstrate. We design and evolve every step of the law crucial. Through communicating success, we design a local accountability system that highlights achievements in academic and career at first level. Next, we ensure hope by creating opportunities that inspire confidence and passion. By exercising role, we guarantee that every student, not only follows their learning journey, but also supported by trusted and caring adults. Finding hard places to foster learning, and great physical, professional, and practical skills. Including trends for interesting self-development, health, ability training. Ensure your students are fully suited and prepared to actively watch education. This comprehensive framework enables 40 ISD to reach district leader through chartering classes. Transforming them into a dynamic, future-focused system that empowers everyone to thrive. And we will count those as the stretch students practice and evaluate their success. The metrophobic system and shape of the future. We believe this is the future of education. We envision a future for every level of crime, not just academics, but in all aspects of life.
We would definitely make a difference. With these three new milestones, academic and career readiness, of graduate preparedness, not even tests, but taught by actively 40 ISD.
Hello, my name is Joseph Lanning, and as we mentioned, we're at the University of Chicago. We believe the measurement is sufficient to grow beyond business assessments. Focusing on real-world applications, student growth and meaningful experiences reflect their ability to communicate, lead, and innovate in self-problems. By incorporating personal milestones, practical demonstrations, and engagement metrics, we can create a system that ensures students are not just learning, but thriving. 40 ISD has been imparting 12th grade milestones in place, while our committee identified ways to expand and refine them, creating a global accountability system that ensures every student is developing future-ready skills. We want meaningful opportunities for students to navigate life's challenges with confidence.
Hello, I am basically a student here at 40 ISD. It was an honor and a blessing to serve here in our kitchen and to represent our students. Tonight, we represent our recommendation to the 40 ISD school. Our plan centers on six key components, three actionable steps, three core areas that shape students' future. Outlining how our planning works and our recommendations for our future of education in 40 ISD.
Over 125 students, parents, business leaders, and educators representing our 40 family came together with one mission: to ensure 40 ISD students are prepared for the future. Guided by voices from across the community, the Forecast the Future of Education Committee crafted a vision focused on academics, real-world skills, accountability, and meaningful opportunities. In order to forecast the future of education, data was shared from futurist Michael McQueen, predicting that 60% of jobs available in 2040 don't even exist yet. So how do we prepare students for a successful future? Our community believes in equipping students with future-ready skills that empower them to thrive in an ever-evolving world. Skills like communication, collaboration, and leadership. Critical thinking, innovation, and problem-solving. Financial literacy and practical life readiness. Self-improvement and personal development. Academic and career preparedness. Digital leadership and citizenship. Entrepreneurship and self-reliance. Social responsibility and kindness. Health and well-being, and practical workplace skills. All essential for fostering confident, capable individuals who will shape the future with purpose and integrity. The committee also learned from Gallup's research that there are three major indicators of student success: hope, well-being, and engagement. When students feel hope, experience well-being, and engage in their learning, their academic and personal growth accelerate. The Forecast the Future of Education Committee is charging 40 ISD to provide more opportunities for engagement, focus on future-ready skills, and expand milestones. With those action items in mind, the committee's recommendation is built on six interconnected pillars that form a comprehensive framework for future success. First, by preparing learners, we ensure every student masters essential academic and future-ready skills. From clear communication and dynamic collaboration to innovative problem-solving and digital leadership. We then track milestones that transparently measure students' growth, keeping families informed every step of the way. Through communicating success, we designed a local accountability system that highlights achievements in academic, career, and personal growth. Next, we ensure hope by creating opportunities that inspire confidence and unlock potential. By increasing engagement, we guarantee that every student is not only involved in their learning journey, but also supported by trusted and caring adults. Finally, our focus to foster well-being integrates physical, emotional, and practical skills, including financial literacy, self-development, health, and workplace readiness. Ensuring students are holistically prepared to navigate life's challenges. This comprehensive framework enhances 40 ISD's existing kindergarten-through-12th-grade milestones, transforming them into a dynamic, future-focused system that empowers every learner to thrive. Our local accountability system ensures students aren't just evaluated by state assessments, they're measured by milestones that shape their futures. We believe this is the future of education. We envision a future where every learner thrives, not just academically, but in all aspects of life.
Me and I'm here to have English. To create meaningful experiences for our students, family, and children. So today, I'm proud to share the next best. A place for learning, movement, creativity.
One for a scene to start with. Three company owners, projects, and just the show. They have joint agreements for others in actually part of this one class. And second grade water safety, who are award-winning, swishing jack.
What's the first carrier?
All of us, as we were here as always, give you a silverware thing on the two existing. Whether it can water be swished or not, I'm saying advocate as a lifelong art. This space is designed.
Definitely, the swimming facility is one I see. For all of us, something for each person. For the first time, the next year, we'll call, we'll have their own. It's all traffic, right? We'll finish it up. There are 1248. It all shall be all for us, for Washington, both for captain. You have the right opportunity for our communication gift. A quick change in the road is coming through. And what's this brand opportunity for a previous as well? I've had a new gymnastics spec on the first floor. A modern art space that's natural to this new. The tech class designed by. Kitchen. The library. That's. Where our. Garage. Space available. Safe. That's your session. My similar. Which fits the attention. All of them. It's a trans. These five different. And a family engagement for all of us. These new golf facilities are possible. Construction of saving from the 2019 construction. Previously, we reinvested. Traditionally, not. Matter. These facilities will be open in the face of corruption over the next two years with the facility fully open by the fall of 2027. This strengthens our commitment to renting students or family and our entire community. Education is just what happens in a classroom. It's what happens in our lives, in our passions, and the moments we create together. This new facility is our way of saying.
I did want to put this down here, Mike, because I have a couple of huge projects. In addition to the. Where it's not. Now, we're going to find a week on a permit for the city to begin the session of the animals in life. From around about by. So both of those are projects that hopefully will be over here soon. In addition, I would like to trust and report about a project that we're asking you to approve tonight for bids. And that is elders, you remember, well, just as a reminder, that it's going to be under the loss of the community. If you're familiar with that area at all, this is Richard's Way, the road in front. So our property is right there to the east of the roundabout. You should recognize that picture from the sky. It's our prototype home for school. So that will open in the 26, 27 school year, just as a reminder. It's going to be really fun. We have numbers for this one. The Jewish Miller in March. So really excited about being able to go and great to get down on the ground. Those are fun. Loss of those. The next thing I'd like to discuss with you guys is really, it's a really great, amazing concept. We want to share with you that is the next step as we continue to inspire our students during training education. We put together a little video to show you what this project looks like.
40 ISD is built on a vision: to inspire students through innovative education. But education doesn't stop with our students. It's about creating opportunities for all learners. Learners from three years old to 103 years old, and building a community that grows together. Recently, we brought together over 100 members of the 40 community to talk about the future of education. What they want for their children and their families, and how we can shape learning beyond the classroom. They shared their ideas, their hopes, and their vision, and one thing was clear. We all agree that focusing on hope, well-being, and engagement is key to creating meaningful experiences for our students, families, and community. So today, I'm proud to share the next phase in providing engaging opportunities for our 40 family with the expansion of the aquatic training facility into something much bigger. A place for learning, movement, creativity, play, and connection. Starting with an additional pool that will allow us to expand swimming programs for all ages, from learn-to-swim classes and second-grade water safety to our award-winning swim, dive, and water polo teams, all the way to senior water aerobics, and so much more. Whether you're learning to swim for the first time or staying active as a lifelong learner, this space is designed just for you. But swimming is just the beginning of this space, and we'll offer so much more. And a secure second floor with flexible learning spaces for student education and collaboration, modeled after our innovative OC concept. It's a transformation, redefining education, entertainment, and family engagement for all ages. These new golf and swim facilities are possible through construction cost savings from the 2019 bond projects, proving that we reinvest strategically in opportunities that matter for our community. These facilities will be opening in phased approaches over the next two years with the facilities fully open by the fall of 2027. This strengthens our commitment to enriching students, families, and our entire community. Education isn't just what happens in a classroom. It's what happens in our lives, in our passions, in the moments we create together. This new facility is our way of saying 40 ISD is here to innovate, to inspire, to connect, and bring more opportunities for students, families, and our community. We're excited about what's ahead, and we can't wait to see you learn with us.
As you watch that video, you can't help but think one of our values is true. Kind of getting confused a little bit, just to look at the amazing opportunities for future opportunities for students, our community, and our parents. Thank you.
Moving on, there's two. I've seen my financial reports, Mr. John Chase.
Yeah, I want to do this to you. We see all this breaks up, and we thought that's more than we're supposed to. We won't give it a shot here.
We make it all possible, John.
That's nice of my financial report. Food activity through March. This is nine months into our fiscal year, beginning with general fund. We collect a hundred fifty-four point nine billion in revenue, which is seventy-two percent of the amount estimated. Now, our largest revenue item for the month was, say, eight, totally one point two million dollars. Expenses to date were a hundred seventy-one point seven million, or seventy-six percent of the amount appropriated. And for prepared purposes, we also spent seventy-six percent of the amount of our year last year. In our food service fund, we had collections of seven point nine million, or eighty-four percent of the amount estimated. Last year, we received eighty-two percent of the revenue investment. And our average daily launch participation rate during the month was fifty percent. Expenses to date was eight point one million, or eighty-two percent of the amount appropriated. And last year, we spent seventy-seven percent of our appropriation. There's nothing really moving forward in our debt service fund for the month, except for the fact that we collect about half million in property tax collections, expenses, and everything else in the fund is pretty much over. You know, we spent a hundred percent of our appropriation, and we're nearly a hundred percent collection on our revenue investment. So it's pretty much all we'll see for the rest of the year. And then finally, in our cash investment report, our investment balance at the end of the month, our general fund, food service, debt service, capital project fund, so general money, million dollars. So if there's any questions that we have financial.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. So here, now should we move on into third quarter, best on the fourth?
So at the end of the third quarter, this cash investment, we just resolved this fact of two, a turn, nineteen point eight million. We have a little bit of about a little over a million dollars that we have in student activity and camp activity funds that we all report in our general fund, in our general fund, financial report during the month. Those funds were distributed between the general fund and the debt service and capital project funds. The distribution that you see on the chart there is pretty evenly at this point in the year, about thirty-three or so percent each one of the, one of each one of the funds. Now, the average return to these investments was between four point one and four and a half percent. And the total range for the quarter was two point eight million dollars. So that completes the financial part of the investment report. Any questions we have to answer?
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Keep going, John. Excellent.
And finally, we got the tax collection report for the quarter. As you're aware, the district's total letting for the year was a hundred twenty-two and a half million, which is about eleven point ten increase over the prior year. Now, most of this growth, as you know, was related to the new property added to the tax roll. The first time, current tax collection today was a hundred twenty-nine million, or ninety-seven point four percent of the amount of letting. Collections of taxes for prior years today totaled three hundred thousand, or point three percent of the current letting. Compared to purposes, prior year, we had current tax collections of ninety-seven and a half percent, and one percent collections in taxes for prior years. Again, I conclude the property type question report. I can answer any question.
Any final questions for Mr. Chase, let me get these out. I hear your name. Thank you, John. I have absolutely noticed a trigger protection on our filings. There were no filings to report this one. Public forms, funding the agenda, the one on the two first board, which is on the nine exit agenda. B approved the budget amendments. C approved the contract services. D approved the reason of TDC. E approved the MSB service contract. F approved the stack cover purchase. G approved the policy of reasons FDA and FDP local as a section of following. Do you consider, therefore, the motion for the board? Fair, some of it could be proven. Motion, Mr. John, second.
Second.
This is taking on a paper second. Can you oppose? I hear your name. Moving on, I would say consideration possible for approval. Yes, that's a contract. Is that a mystery here?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Dr. Harris, your board. The district has conducted a comprehensive evaluation of our current partnership with ESSS or Substitute Solutions, and recommends removing the contract from twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This recommendation is based on a thorough review of their services and extensive discussions focused on aligning the district's expectations and addressing areas for improvement. To ensure optimal staffing across all our campuses, the district and ESSS have prioritized the following areas: increasing substitute field rates, meeting our goal of ninety percent; enhancing the quality and preparedness of substitute staff; improving communication and responsiveness; and strengthening our training and support. This slide here compares our field rates between the twenty-three and twenty-four school year and the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. notable improvements include a decrease in unfield absences despite the addition of three new campuses this year. There was a significant increase in paraprofessional field rates, which have now been doubled. As we address the teacher field rates, there has been an improvement from the fall of sixty-five percent. When I did these numbers, they were actually at seventy percent this spring. We've had really a couple of good weeks, and so that is training uppers. And so we show a steady, like I said, a steady upward trend. I think a contributing factor to this is the addition of a second full-time ESS staff number dedicated to 40 ISD. Our new account manager, Leanne Chapman, actually has brings a strong track record of success from a neighboring district. Currently, only eighty-six of the original substitutes from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year remain active. Our ESS has onboarded two hundred fifty-six new substitutes this year. Additionally, the district has hired forty-five of those substitutes, eight teachers and thirty-seven paraprofessionals. So which has been beneficial to the district, and obviously has impacted the overall field rates of ESSS. As we move into our recruitment strategy, there's five areas that we're focusing on: maintaining a robust digital presence; engaging with local community; increasing higher event opportunities; attending local job hours and community events; and launching and getting grassroots outreach effort among our neighborhoods. The district will continue working closely with ESS to recruit and retain high-quality substitute staff. A key goal of this partnership is to build a substitute pool of five hundred and six hundred individuals, including, which is mostly hidden, a base of what we call floater subs available for late and lasting end of cycles. So with all this information, we've had several sit-downs with their management team, and have really basically gone very hard to light. What we need is the district, and what was promised to us is the district for this partnership to continue. So we feel comfortable with some of the growth, with some of the plans they have in place for us to make the recommendation to continue for one more year and see what those results are. So about Christmas time, I expect us to come back to the report, and whether or not we want to continue with this partnership or whether we're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any questions? Thank you for your. Any questions, please?
Under the contract, the extension, the same amount of money being paid in cash?
Yes, ma'am, there's no increase, there's no increase. That's correct.
Dr. Harris, any comments?
First off, I appreciate our human resources team. They continue to work diligently with ESS to try and get those field rates. I think we have seen as you shared, an increase in productivity throughout the year. I don't think any of us expected to hit a ninety percent fill rate here. We want to obviously, but this is something that is weak and show improvement. We do believe that this is a partnership that we want to extend for another year, see if they can hit some target goals that we set for them. So we recommend approval of the ESS contract, that percent.
As you heard, administration, our motion.
There are some different motions for approval of the contract extension with ESS.
Thank you, Mr. John, second.
Second.
This is for our paper. Can you oppose? Thank you, Mr. Harris. Now, let's skip down to item twelve on your agenda. Consideration of approval of a quarter authorization issuance, guiding forty independent facilities to have unlimited tax building and refunding bonds in water war series. This does mean a purpose and series, letting you continue to direct annual annual tax for the payment of a water war series of bonds. Strangely informed terms, conditions, and resolve other matters consistent related to the issue of sale and delivery of water war series of bonds, including approval distribution of water war official statements pertaining thereto the authorization of one more paying any of rich, rare, written, and purchased contracts, each pertaining to a series of bonds applying to letter, representation, or file, or transfer, or stepping, granting, and authorizing certain members of the board trustees and direct staff to approve and execute certain documents relating to the sale of each series of bonds, providing effective date. Mr. John Chase? You can clear that right away, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I said definitely off mouth, although I would get, there's need your lawyers to pop this up, it gets pretty complicated. So I'll try to simplify it a little bit, but you basically, in your board packet, you were, you, it was included a sample bond grant order, and it would authorize the administration to issue a hundred twenty-five million dollars of bonds. In those bonds, the proceeds would be used to construct element G number twelve, which we've heard a little bit about tonight already, and I think we'll speak some more about it at the next, the new item. Construction of OC expansion plays a role. Reimburs the district, from the district general fund for any of the, any of the land purchases that we get back in February. Construct drives different access around the OC and to replace the efficient elementary roof and air conditioning units. And so the order also authorized us to refinance up the hundred forty-two million dollars of bonds that we currently have outstanding that are callable in series two thousand thirteen, series two thousand fifteen, series two thousand sixteen, and series two thousand seventeen, as long as the net present value savings is at least three percent or greater. And so then, the board should use to approve the grant order, give superintendent or associate or executive business finance the authorization to execute the sale in the absence of the secretary or myself, the board president, or the vice president, or our secretary, if I still execute the sale. So if, it is our, a recommendation for board approve that grant order as presented, and authorize superintendent or associate superintendent to finalize these sales as we go into August.
Board, administration, if you have any questions, or go ahead, question.
President Ferris, I believe that the board trustees adopted the order authorizing the issuance of forty in business with district ownership and tax building and refunding bonds in water war series about that will be able to sell.
Motion, Mr. Harris, second. This is paper. Call our papers, aye. Can you oppose? I hear your name. Now, let's go back to previous page, and consideration of all approval of construction projects.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, for it. We actually have four separate bids tonight to discuss. I'll do the first one, and then I'll pass this over to Mr. Fisher to talk about the random reading, because they are actual construction projects. The first one is furniture for the 40 running academy. We normally do a blanket approval for that. We did not do it on the current academy, because we didn't know exactly what was to be built in and what we need to purchase. So we do have a bid for a hundred and ninety-four thousand, a hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-one cents for furniture for offices, teacher desks, and capture furniture for the new 40 running academy that we'll ask you to approve. And then, Mr. Fisher will continue with the random reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Forsyth. Would you move on? I'll start with the addition on the 40 running academy. The items that we are requesting approval on tonight is for playground equipment at the FLA, and that total is a hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty. Though, there was a bunch of amount included in that FLA project that was previously approved, and that amount is actually under that budget amount, not just eighteen, seventeen, or eighteen thousand dollars. So that's what did the already established budget for that project. The next project that we.
Uh, so we continue to need to, uh, add and, and prepare for this growth, uh, this, uh, bond grant order will allow for additional seats for our students and some flexible seating in that, where we can use them for different, uh, age groups in the future potentially. Uh, also, just wanted to remind, um, everyone that, um, I think we presented the budget workshop today, uh, but potential decrease in tax track next year, uh, once we do close out the books in August and propose a new tax rate, and, um, this grant order and selling these bonds would, uh, would, uh, suit what we have, uh, projected for next year with a decrease of anything to 3.5. So, with that being said, um, we would go ahead and recommend, um, that you approve the grant order as presented, um, and, um, authorize superintendent or, uh, associate superintendent to, uh, to finalize these sales as we go into August.
Board, if there's administration, if you have any questions, or any questions?
President Ferris, I'm with the board trustees, adopted order authorizing the issuance of 40 independent district, unlimited tax, and building, and, uh, recurring bonds in order more series, about 100 people, so?
No questions? Mr. Reed, you have a second? Just, aye? All the favors, aye? Aye. Can you oppose? Now, let's go back to previous page and, uh, considering the possible approval of construction, if there's any more, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Ferris. We actually have four, um, separate bids, uh, tonight to discuss, and I'll do the first one, and I'll pass this over to, uh, Mr. Fisher to, uh, talk about the remaining three because they are, uh, actual construction projects. So the first one is furniture for the Forney Learning Academy. Uh, we normally do a blanket, um, approval for that. We did not do it on the current account because we didn't know exactly what was to be built in and what we need to purchase. Um, so we do have a bid, um, for 194,000, uh, 194,000, figure, 35 dollars or 41 cents for furniture for offices, teacher desks, and capture furniture for the Forney Learning Academy that, uh, will ask you to approve, and then, uh, Mr. Fisher will continue with the remaining three.
Thank you, Ms. Morrisak. Good evening, again. Uh, I'll start with the, uh, addition on the Forney Learning Academy, the items that we, uh, are requesting approval on tonight, this for playground equipment at the FLA, and that total was 192,950. Now, uh, there was a budget amount included in that FLA project that was previously approved, uh, and that amount is actually under that budget amount, not just the 18, 17, or 18,000 dollars, so that's within the already established budget for that project. Uh, the next project that we are requesting approval on is the new, uh, transportation facility, and on that project, uh, we took original bids, uh, on February the 13th, and then a, a rebid for one of the packages on April the 17th, because we didn't get any bids the first time, and, uh, the total on transportation facility that we're asking approval on is 15 million, 801 dollars, 300, I'm sorry, 15 million, 801,308 dollars, and that is below the original 16 million dollar budget that was established for that project. The third one is the elementary number school, boy, I've got it going on tonight. Um, the elementary school number 12 project that Ms. Morrisak, uh, mentioned earlier, um, we actually are bidding that project in two packages, so this is package one, which is the building project, uh, but we are going ahead and requesting approval for the overall budget on that one, which is... 54 million, 292,728, and that is just slightly under 55 million dollar budget that was established for that project. So, I would be glad to answer any questions that you have on any of those.
Any question? Forney, any questions at these? Dr. Ferris, any comments?
Uh, just as a reminder, the elementary 12 would, uh, open in 2026. That's one reason why we need to split these bids and expedite this bill, um, based on some of the capacity needs that we're going to have with the elementary schools. So, uh, recommend, uh, approval of the business for some of the second.
Or, if there's any further questions, I have a question.
Is there any motion for the board for the construction, as, as?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, go to second.
Second.
Mr. Horace, all the favors, aye? Aye. Can you oppose? Thank you, John. Close session, this is taking very disabled to live on out of the fourth, the consideration of possible approval, the rapid change of the organization, contract personnel. Do I have a motion for, Mr. Ferris, I'm with the board, proof of validation, for what I'm, 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 contract personnel, discussing the motion. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, go to second. This is taking all the favors, aye? Aye. Can you oppose? Here, uh, 15, consideration of possible action regarding suspension of the HKA mandate of contract, any questions?
President Ferris, I'm with the board, it's found that no good cause existed for particularly death and dispersion to abandon our contract for Forney ISD, and on the rest of superintendent, take necessary action to report the employee, the SBA, since I've been dead for a week.
Mr. Reed, you have a second?
Second.
Stops. All the favors, aye? Aye. Can you oppose? Your, uh, move on to six, take consideration and possible action for new employee contracts and any questions?
Fair, I'm with your proposal, employee contracts and course of implementation to send everybody to administration, close session.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, go to second. This is taking all the favors, aye? Aye. Can you oppose? Thank you, John. And on to item 17, Dr. Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Uh, just a few quick announcements. Uh, we will return to this room, just to point this out, next week, on Tuesday, May 13th, for a special call board meeting, uh, we begin at 6 o'clock on our close session. Uh, then, uh, we do have a graduation. Uh, both of those will be on May 23rd, also right here at the OC, uh, and then we'll have our, our regular June meeting, actually on Tuesday, May 27th, the day of Memorial Day, just to note that in the calendars as well. Uh, those will be announcements we have for the season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. We'll call this, Mr. Ferris, thank you very much.